Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, May 19th, 2025. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Groff.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder. Mayor Rowe.
Here. And Councilmember Schroeder indicated prior to the meeting that she was not able to attend. By way of introduction, we also have with us up at the dais our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who is on my right at the end, and our city manager, Pat Trudgen, who is on my left a little closer than usual. And we have staff who will be participating in the meeting and will make those introductions as various agenda items come up. We would ask if you have a cellphone to be sure and silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. We do have a couple of things for members of the public who are attending the meeting. In the back of the room, under the big clock, there's a table with extra copies of tonight's agenda. If you need a copy of the agenda to follow along the order of business this evening, feel free to pick up one of those. We also do, as always and as required by state law, have a copy of all of the meeting materials in a three-ring binder on that same table, which is available to the public for reference if needed over the course of the meeting. However, it is one copy, so you do have to share. With those, a couple of housekeeping matters. We'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is approval of tonight's agenda. And as always, I'll check with Mr. Trudgen to see if there are any staff-initiated changes to the agenda this evening.
Mr. Mayor, staff has no changes to the agenda.
All right. And I'll check with city council members. Are there any council-requested changes to the agenda or items council members would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening?
No.
No.
Does not appear to be the case. We do one quick check-in at the start of each meeting as well with members of the public. We do have, at the end of our agenda, Section 10, which begins at the bottom of the first page and carries over slightly onto the second page, what we know as our consent agenda. These items are taken up as a single motion, and they're usually fairly administrative, like approval of our check register and some things like that. But if somebody is here for one of those items in Section 10 this evening, this would be a time to let us know. And what we'll do is we'll move that particular item earlier in the meeting so that you don't have to wait to the very end to either make a comment or ask a question. Is there anyone here for an item in Section 10 of tonight's agenda, also known as the consent agenda? It does not appear to be the case. And we certainly will have opportunities for public comment on the earlier items, the business items, as those come up. So have no fear, we'll make sure and do that. With that, then, is there a motion from the council to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That opposed, that, excuse me, opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. This is what's known as sort of general public comment. As I noted before, we'll have opportunities for members of the public to speak or ask questions during the various agenda items as they come up. But we do also, at the start of each meeting, want to provide an opportunity for the public to speak on items related to city business or of interest to people in the community that aren't on this evening's agenda. If somebody is here for that purpose, we would just ask that you have a seat at the table in front of one of the microphones when it's time. And we will ask you to identify yourself by name and either street or address for the record. Direct your comments or questions to the council. If there's something we're not able to respond to immediately, we may direct staff to do some follow-up or something like that if it's a question or a concern related to city business. If it's something that's related to, of interest to people in the community, certainly we're happy to have you here to promote that as well. So, and there is a three-minute time limit per speaker, but usually most people can say so much in three minutes that we don't have to enforce it. But I will be gentle if I do. Feel free to come on up and, once again, start with your name and street or address for the record.
All right. My name is Alyssa Perdough, and I live on 1488 Woodland, down the street here. I'm a resident of Roseville and a very busy mom of two young kids, and I'm just here to discuss the bee ordinance within Roseville. This past Mother's Day, I was trying to enjoy the book, a book on my deck, and enjoy the day, and I was swarmed and attacked and stung by bees and chased inside. When I closed the door, they were all pelting the door. I looked over to see a very angry bee box in my neighbor's yard that was newly put in. I hadn't seen it before, almost directly on my fence line. We just have a small lot, so it was right there. Thankfully, I noticed it, and I had to call my parents because my dad is anaphylactic to bees and has to carry an EpiPen, so he couldn't come over unfortunately that day. I also live directly next door to a hospice house for those adults spending their final days, and my next-door neighbor also has small children. So we were all directly affected by this and endangered to the poor beekeeping that happened that day. I went to go talk to my neighbor about this, and he said that they were a bit aggressive right now. My bees are aggressive because I don't have a queen. So anyone who knows anything about bees knows that you have to have a queen for them to function, to not have the proper education. The bees will not survive without a queen, so, and also when they sting, they die. And so in this case, all the bees will die eventually. So in my opinion, it's just abuse to the bee population and putting us all in danger as well. So when I did some research and called the local police, they said there was no ordinance on bees in Roseville, which I was kind of bummed to hear, to hear this because I have some friends that have bees, and there's just like some pretty strict ordinance in other cities. So I'm just recommending that we adopt the City of St. Paul's ordinance, which is really a great guideline of you have to have education in a certain course. At the U of M, they do a really good beekeeping course. You have to have a permit. You have to have fencing for your bees. You have to have a sign that says, "I have bees." So for instance, for my dad, when he comes over, he would know, like, "I can be safe. They have bees, but I can stay clear," you know? So that, that was my recommendation and what I'm bringing to the council today.
Right. Thank you for bringing that forward. And we will take that under consideration, and I will make sure, if we can get your contact information, so staff, you can just give it to Mr. Trudgen here.
Sure.
And then we can follow up and let you know if and when the city is taking that up. Mr. Trudgen?
Yes, and we've already been in contact.
Yes.
Over the phone and many emails. So we have examples of the St. Paul orders that she has indicated. So if the council would like, we can schedule that for a future conversation. Right now, we allow for beekeeping, but have no other regulations regarding placement or structures or anything like that, so probably needs to be looked at.
Yeah. That would be wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Yep, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for general public comment this evening? All right, then, we'll move on with our agenda. And first up on our agenda, under our business, is recognitions and donations. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. As is usually practiced, I will read the proclamation, and then the council would make a motion to approve. The first proclamation this evening, excuse me, is in regard to LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the City of Roseville supports the LGBTQIA+ community and honors their many contributions to the health of the city, and remains committed to treating all people with fairness and respect. And whereas in 1993, Minnesota became the first state in the nation to outlaw both sexual orientation and gender discrimination in the field of employment, housing, and accommodations. And whereas in 2013, the state of Minnesota legalized same-sex marriage. And whereas in 2021, the City of Roseville became the ninth municipality in Minnesota to ban the practice of conversion therapy on LGBTQIA youth and vulnerable adults, and a practice now banned by the state of Minnesota as of 2023. And whereas Roseville continues the tradition for communities across America recognizing their LGBTQIA+, which is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and ally residents during the month of June, and recognizes the plus to symbolize the inclusion of all identities. And whereas LGBTQIA people, plus people, as the rainbow flag symbolizes, come from every group, religion, ethnicity, age, occupation, ability or disability, size and shape. And whereas members of the Roseville LGBTQIA+ community have always served as valuable members of our community and our country in every capacity, as homeowners, taxpayers, members of the military, business owners, parents, and employees, among others. And whereas it is important to recognize that we are all part of the same community. And whereas LGBTQIA+ residents have enriched the life, enriched the diverse community of Roseville through their participation in the city government, the arts, religious and civil institutions, education and community organizations. And whereas the City of Roseville believes that all people deserve to be protected from bullying, harassment, discrimination, and health disparities, and convey a clear message that intolerance is not welcoming our community. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community allies, including Roseville High School student groups, provide support and encouragement to Roseville youth with the assistance of the school district staff and administration. And whereas the City of Roseville reaffirms our commitment to promoting full inclusion and equality for every resident of our city, now therefore be resolved, the City of Roseville declares June 2025 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Roseville.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve that proclamation. On Pride Month, is there discussion on the motion?
I would just say, you know, I'm very pleased with the steps that Roseville has taken to be an inclusive community, and this is one of those things that they've done. And I know many members of the community compliment me on all the work that the council and the city has done on this, these issues.
Additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero and is approved. The second proclamation this evening is in relation to Gun Violence Awareness Day and Month, and reads as follows. Whereas Americans are on average 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, gun violence kills 125 Americans and injures more than 200 every day. Each year, more than 18,000 people in the United States die from gun homicides. And whereas in 2023, firearms were the leading cause of death of children under age 18 in the United States, taking the lives of 4,455 young people. And whereas gun violence disproportionately impacts Black, Indigenous, and people of color, Black youth are 18 times more likely to die than white children by gun violence. Hispanic and Indigenous people also die by gun violence at twice the rate of white people. And whereas in Minnesota, there are on average 527 gun-related deaths and 1,174 non-fatal injuries each year. This includes 143 homicides and 583 injuries from assaults with guns. And whereas, Roseville is not immune to gun violence, including on April 5th, 2022, when an individual recklessly fired shots on West Lake Oasso Boulevard, hitting homes and cars, and seriously injuring Roseville Police Officer Ryan Duxbury. And whereas, Roseville and cities across the country are working to end gun violence with evidence-based solutions, including integration of social services and mental health support into the public safety work, holding gun-turn-in events for community members to dispose of unwanted guns, and providing gun locks free of charge to allow residents to better secure their guns in their homes. And whereas protecting public safety is one of the city's most important responsibilities. And whereas upholding Second Amendment rights can and should go hand in hand with the promoting safe and responsible gun ownership and use, including limited gun access for people with dangerous histories, now therefore be resolved that the City of Roseville renews its commitment to ending gun violence, and we pledge to do all we can to keep guns out of the wrong hands and encourage safe, responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. Be it further resolved, the City of Roseville declares the month of June 2025 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and recognizes June 6th, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all residents to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence.
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on that motion?
I'd like to just thank the people who are here tonight, who worked really hard to make sure we continue to acknowledge this and who show up at so many of our events, including making sure that youth are educated and securing gun storage, preventing unintentional shootings, youth suicides in school shootings, and just with the goal of really keeping that aspect out of our everyday occurrence and really, I'm bringing that to the fore. So I appreciate the those who work on this, and thank you for bringing this forward again. I, I believe it really shows our commitment, and we continue to show that in many ways as a city, and I'm very proud to say that I'm part of that.
Other discussion on the motion? I would just note, as an example of that, at the Community in Bloom event in McCarran's Lake Park this weekend, we did have Roseville Police there who were providing free gun locks. And also, there was another organization that was there, a volunteer organization that helps educate people about gun safety in the community, also providing free gun locks as well. And so that was a great opportunity, especially in a community that is disproportionately poor, and, and also includes a lot of new immigrants to our, our country, and who can tend to be victims of crime and who can tend to be exploited and, and as a result, get into gun violence. And so I thought that was a great opportunity to really put, as Councilmember Strawn was saying, our money where our mouth is in this regard. So just wanted to note that. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero, and that proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We have a number of business items that are public hearings, and our first one is a public hearing related to certifying unpaid utility charges to the county property taxes. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen to introduce this item for our consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, as you mentioned, this is a night to conduct a public hearing to certify the unpaid utility charges and other charges to the property tax rolls. As the council knows, on a quarterly basis, we do certify to the county any unpaid false alarm bills, water, sewer, and other charges that are in excess of 90 days on the following year's property taxes. We do notify the folks of their delinquency, talk about the hearing tonight to contest that, and also give a date, in this case of May 9th, where they could pay that delinquency and would not show up on the sales tax. So every person on the list that's-
On the property tax.
I'm sorry. Yeah, on the property tax.
You've got sales tax on the record.
Yeah. Don't know where that came from. On the property tax. And so tonight, we're asking for the council to consider adoption of a resolution that lists all the folks that are in the properties that are delinquent. But this is an opportunity for a public hearing when folks can come forward and ask questions or contest that delinquency. So I'll turn it over to you, but we are asking for approval of that resolution that's included as attachment one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgen. And I just wanted to clarify, the resolution and the list is a list of addresses and properties, not a list of individuals by name, just in case anyone's concerned about that. The other thing I would note is that I believe notice has been provided to everybody who appears on the list.
Yes, they have.
Or to the properties.
Yes, they have.
Okay, so they've had notice that this is the hearing this evening. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing then. Once again, this is on the, certifying the list of delinquent utility and other fees to the county for collection with property taxes. And we'll open up the public hearing if anybody is here to speak to this item. We can go through the procedures for public hearings. Is anyone here to speak to the proposal to certify these unpaid utility charges to the Ramsey County for tax collection? Does not appear to be the case. One more opportunity? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing then and move to council consideration. We have the resolution and the list attachment included with us, or with the packet materials. The resolution is attachment one. Is there a motion with respect to that resolution?
So moved. Second.
I will say, moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Groff.
I had one question. When we place these on the taxes, is there some sort of fee or penalty?
Yes. If you look at attachment two, you'll notice that there is a $25 fee on each one. So, yeah. So each of these are getting charged at $25 fee. That's something new that we haven't done in the past.
And it does take staff time and-
It does.
Councilmember Strawn?
Do we know, some of the folks on here are regularly on here. Do we know if they ever pay?
They pay when they pay their taxes, yes.
Okay.
Some properties seem to do that on a pretty regular basis. So you see the same properties on. There's an occasional one that, for whatever reason, I forgot, or they're in transition that happens, but we do have some regulars that are on there, as you can see, so. But they do pay that.
But because of their tax collections, they eventually do have to pay.
They eventually do. I did note, just because I was curious, in a couple of these properties that are on here, we're also behind in their taxes to the county. So that can happen as well. But others seem to pay up every year and settle annually when they pay their taxes.
And at any point, if they were behind in their taxes, would we be able to impact their water?
So if they, we have a policy, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, it's like three successive quarters. If they're a non-residential property, we do contact them and we can turn off the water. We've never done that. We have sent letters in the past, and those bills get paid pretty quickly after that.
Right. And just also, once these are certified, because we do it on a quarterly basis, and county property taxes are collected on a different schedule, do property owners have the ability to, to settle that assessment prior to their property tax bill being due?
I'm not quite sure. I suppose the county would take back taxes at any point, but there's still the penalties that are charged on that. So in theory, I think yes. We did this in 2010 on a quarterly basis. It's just property sale. Things are added to the end of the year, you may have a new owner stuck with that. It's not known on the, on the record, so we try to make sure it's up to date to deal with those transactions. But as far as I know, I think they can probably pay at any time.
Right. Thank you. Is there any other questions about the, or excuse me, discussion? We do have the resolution motion before us, so properly by way of discussion. Right, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero and is approved. Those back charges will be, or those unpaid bills will be certified then to the county. With that, that brings us to another item related to unfinished business, you might say. We have a request to, to consider performing an abatement for unresolved code violations at a property at 2941 Victoria Street North. And we have our codes enforcement officer, Dave England, with us this evening to introduce this item for our consideration. Welcome, Mr. England.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As noted and stated, this is a request to perform an abatement of several violations of city code. Basically, we started out, we, we had an unsafe structure that was erected on this property, and that has been taken down since we delivered the council notification, which tends to get some cooperation. But we have not, I don't know what this is. We have not gotten full compliance. We still have an unlicensed, inoperable vehicle on an improved surface on the property.
Yep, you may have to slide the microphone slightly out.
I'm sorry, I was looking at that one.
Oh, it's not up on the main screen.
Nope.
Or on our monitors. There we go.
There it is.
All right.
So this is as of about 4:30 today. This is the unlicensed, inoperable vehicle. We still have numerous items stored outside, and the structure that was there appears to be at the rear of the vehicle now. We've been working with this property owner since last September. He's been very semi-communicative and cooperative. And like I stated, that, once we gave the council notification to the property owner, we've seen some progress. But we are still requesting approval to conduct an abatement, to remove the vehicle, and remove the items that are stored outside, and invoice the property owner for those charges. And if they don't pay, we would assess it to the taxes as well. I did not see the property owner here, but I don't know if there's a property representative with us.
Is there a representative of the property on Victoria Street that's the subject of this requested abatement? Doesn't appear to be the case this evening. Right? I didn't want to interrupt. Is that the, the end of the presentation?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. But if there's questions, I can try and answer them.
Right, very good. Are there questions from the council? In terms of the, the items that are stored outside, does the city usually put those in storage when they're collected, or is that something that they're disposed of?
They are disposed of. Since they are stored outside, they are considered junk.
Okay. So that is important for the property owner to be aware of.
And we've, we've discussed that with him numerous times.
Very good. Other questions from the council? All right. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this requested city abatement of this nuisance ongoing at this property on Victoria Street? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? All right. Seeing no one, then, we'll close the opportunity for public comment. We'll move to council consideration. We have the requested action, which is a motion to direct the community development staff to abate the remaining public nuisance violations on the property, including the towing of the vehicle and the removal of the outside-stored materials and items.
So moved.
Second.
All right. That is moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Bauer. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Strawn is the maker of the motion?
Well, I believe- Well, I believe that at seven months or so here, we have been exceptionally patient. And, you know, the goal is never to see someone's stuff be tossed in the trash, but this has been a lot of time and they've afforded a lot of staff energy to get us to this point. And I think if we have indicated that this is the next path, this is what we need to be doing at this time.
Right. Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Bauer is the second.
No, I'd agree with that. I do appreciate the city giving a large amount of time to resolve these things. Unfortunately, in some cases, time is not the issue.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Once again, we have the motion before us to authorize the city abatement of the nuisance violations remaining on the property at 2941 Victoria Street North in Roseville. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously and that abatement is authorized.
Thank you.
Mr. England. That then brings us to a series of hearings regarding presumptive penalties on violations of our alcohol and tobacco codes and actually state law serving to minors. And we'll go through them in turn. We have with us this evening our deputy police chief, Joe Adams, here to introduce each of these and bring us through the process on these various violations. Chief, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, each year, the Roseville Police Department conducts two alcohol compliance checks of all alcohol sale license holders. This year, the first round of checks were completed on March 29th with a total of four failures. For 2025, all businesses with the city liquor license were provided a letter advising them that the city would be conducting alcohol compliance checks. Due to the total number of failures, I'll provide a brief summary of each incident, followed by staff recommendations. If present, we can then allow an opportunity for the businesses to address the council before moving on to the next one. With that, the first is La Casita on our agenda. And on the date of March 29th, our compliance checker went to La Casita, conducted a compliance check. While there, the checker sat at the bar and ordered a beer. An employee then checked identification. However, they proceeded to serve the alcohol to our checker. The server was issued an administrative citation, which has since been paid. Management later provided the necessary training documentation to PD staff. This is La Casita's second violation in 36 months, with the first occurring on August 12th of 2023. It's staff's recommendation for council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a second violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a five-day liquor license suspension.
All right. Thank you, chief. Is there a representative or representatives from La Casita here this evening who wish to speak to this? It does not appear to be the case. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to the issuance of the presumptive penalty for La Casita for their second violation within 36 months? Also does not appear to be the case. Why don't we go ahead and proceed to consideration of this item, council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strong, to authorize the presumptive penalty, which once again, for the second violation in 36 months, is a $2,000 fine and a five-day license suspension. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Bauer.
Just point out, for those that may be new to listening to this, to note that, can you explain, the ID that's used is a standard ID that's not a fake ID or something we tricked. Can you expand a little bit on that?
Absolutely. Thanks, Councilmember Bauer. So some years ago, the state of Minnesota actually took great steps to make sure that checking identification has become a little easier for those, as math understandably can get a little bit difficult. Some things that they've done for anybody under 21 is, as opposed to a horizontal ID, it's now vertical. So that's the first tell. Obviously, it has the date on it as well, and under it, it says under 21, loud and clear. The checker who goes into the business does not utilize a fake ID. In fact, prior to beginning the compliance checks, they provide the identification to the officers that are accompanying them, which is photocopied and uploaded into our records management system. They're also checked just to make sure that there isn't any kind of fake ID or any extra cash or anything like that on them. So there is a process in place with some redundancy there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Groff.
And also, I heard you say that about two weeks before or approximately, we send a letter out to notify all the businesses that there will be a checker coming out. So they are, it shouldn't be a surprise to them. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Groff. So for the alcohol, and later we'll speak of tobacco, there is a letter that goes out to all license holders for both alcohol and tobacco, letting them know that we'll be conducting two compliance checks throughout the year. So that is correct.
And I have one more.
Sure.
And then, as far as training goes, what is the requirement for servers to be trained? What's the proper policy?
So through the city of Roseville, when they apply for the application, there's a, I forget the exact name of it, but new server training, in that it does give like a pointer system of things to look at. The city provides its own training, but also on there, it also identifies several additional steps that these businesses can take to further train their employees, which is spelled out on there. And then, we also provide for them to use, if they'd like, a signature line for each one of their employees that comes. That is, a lot of times, a sticking point for us, however, is we don't check for the training until after the failure. And there are some businesses that lapse or don't train new employees. So it is a process that is imperfect at times, but the city definitely provides the how-to, if you will, during the application. And each license holder has to renew that annually and provides new staff, along with current staff annual training for alcohol sales.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Strong.
I just wanted to also add that in the report, at least for this particular business, it does indicate that the manager did acknowledge receipt of alcoholic compliance check, you know, kind of announcement. So in most of these, that is the case. They actually acknowledge at the time, yes, we received it. So it's not just, hey, you should have seen this, but they are acknowledging at the time that they did receive it and acknowledging that it still happened. So.
Correct, Councilmember Strong. And what we'll see a lot of times, and it doesn't always get noted in the report, but sometimes our letter will even be like tacked to where they're ordering it. Like, they'll see it. As you'll, if some of the representatives speak today, I think it's a frustration of the management. It's that their employees are letting that slip through the cracks with all the redundancy that's available to them nowadays.
All right. Once again, we do have the motion before us to authorize the issuance of the presumptive penalty in the case of La Casita. If there's no additional discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That presumptive penalty is authorized. Chief, as to the next case.
On March 29th, our compliance checker went to Centro to conduct a compliance check. While there, the checker sat at the bar and ordered an alcoholic Topo Chico. An employee then checked identification. However, they proceeded to serve the alcohol to our checker. The server was issued an administrative citation, which has since been paid. Management later provided the necessary training documentation to PD staff. This is Centro's first violation in 36 months. It's staff's recommendation for council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a one-day liquor license suspension.
All right. Thank you, chief. Is there a representative or representatives from Centro this evening who wish to speak to this? Feel free to come up and have a seat at the microphone. We may have to pull up another chair if we have more than one person.
Hi, councilmembers.
Hello. Welcome.
Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. It is very unfortunate that we're sitting here, especially as new members of the Roseville community. And we very much love being members of the Roseville community. And I wanted to be here to provide any, answer any questions if you have further questions beyond what we are to present and what Officer is to present. But we acknowledge the violation and definitely do not take this lightly. And we believe we have a very, very strong alcohol compliance training program. And we've sent documentation, and I have the team to back that up as well. Fully accept the punishment, but really, I think a lot of it comes down to a really bad decision by a really great employee who has had years of bartending experience and was on his way out the door and really made a really bad decision in the moment. And it affects us all, and that's part of owning a business. And we accept that. Yeah, what else, I guess, whatever questions you might have.
Right. I was just going to note that, yeah, if you could introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Jamie Olson, owner of Centro. And we did receive the letter probably two weeks after the check. We didn't have it in hand. And this is because of our mail policy, it goes to the top. So people at the store level aren't opening the mail, and that sometimes causes a delay. We have since remedied that. If it looks serious, they're instructed to open it. But like a digital email, I guess, notification would probably get, be noticed if that's possible. And either way, I do stand by our behind our training program, and letter or not, like, our staff is trained, it doesn't, you're serious about it every day. It doesn't matter if you get a letter or not. So, yeah.
Cody Webster. I'm the director of operations with the company. Kind of ready to write to what Jamie said. We go through ale training twice a year. So we go above and beyond because we have multiple locations and businesses. We do run ale training, which is alcohol training, at multiple locations across the year to capture those new employees. And we do as much as we can try to re-up before that 12-year expiration date on this. Again, bad decision, bad time, accountability on that. But really, I think, an outlier in what happened.
Just want to offer reassurance to the city and to all of you that we do do our best, and we will continue to do our best. And I hope this doesn't reflect too poorly on our business and our operation.
All right. Well, we appreciate you being here this evening and talking about your process. And I would note that we do have folks who come occasionally because they've had that bad, bad timing, bad decision-making, and then don't come back before the council in this type of situation. So, you know, that is certainly something that is probably the norm in most cases. But we do have a couple, as you've seen already, we do have sometimes folks that end up getting multiple violations within a three-year period. And I think the thing we look at as a council is, you know, do we see that, that the, sort of the message has gotten through as a result of the first unfortunate occurrence? And if we don't see you ever come back here, that's all right. We're okay with that. All right. Other questions from councilmembers or feedback?
Just that I'm glad you're doing your training and taking that seriously. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Strong.
When I, my husband and I were there a few months ago, I actually acknowledged, hey, great job. Everyone I see here is checking IDs. And I think it was the next night, I looked at it, the date, and I think it was the next night that the violation occurred. So it only takes one. And so I appreciate your taking ownership and your continued diligence. And I think that's really an important piece to consider in all of this, for any of these businesses where it only takes once or twice. But we're really trying to protect the public, and we take our job in that seriously. And thank you for taking your end of that, upholding that as well. Thank you.
All right. Is there any, let's see, we do have a request to authorize the presumptive penalty. Is there a motion from the council in that regard?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to authorize the issuance of the presumptive penalty. I should have checked. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? It's not appeared to be the case. We've got the motion before us then. Any discussion on the motion?
I just would add one thing, because it does go up as the, if you do have repeat violations, so, yeah, let's hope it doesn't happen for at least three years.
Forever.
Forever, preferably forever.
Preferably.
And I do want to note, this is our first violation with any of our restaurants in seven years. So.
All right. Well, with that, and the only other thing I will add is I know that occasionally I go to an establishment who actually does a electronic check of IDs. And I don't know what the technology involved or the cost involved in that is, but it seems to be more likely to be foolproof if used. So I don't, like I said, I don't want to tell people how to run their businesses or how that affects people's business plans, but it does seem to provide another level of safety in terms of trying not to have those, those things go wrong. But just putting that out there. We do have the motion before us in regard to the presumptive penalty for Centro. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously and that penalty is authorized. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Adams, the next case is in relation to Shinwa.
Right. Our compliance checker went to Shinwa Korean Steakhouse to conduct a compliance check. While there, the checker sat at the bar and ordered a beer. An employee then checked identification. However, they proceeded to serve the alcohol to our checker. The server was issued an administrative citation, which has since been paid. Management later provided necessary training documentation, documentation to PD staff. However, we did have to follow up. The community action team went and spoke with them last week. This is Shinwa's first violation in 36 months. It should, however, be noted that this is same ownership operates Bonchan, which is the same strip mall, and failed an alcohol compliance check on March 23rd of 2024. The presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for the first violation is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a one-day liquor license suspension.
All right. Thank you, chief. And I believe, Mr. Trudgeon, you had something to add to-
Yeah, Deputy Chief Adams mentioned it. So after a question from Councilmember Strong, looking deeper into it, the owner of Bonchan and Shinwa are the same person, even though they operate under different business entities, apparently. And that does afford the opportunity, if the council wants to consider to go upward on the presumptive penalty, knowing it's the same owner. They're different operations, but the same owner. As Shinwa is in front of you tonight, you would need to consider an upward penalty for Shinwa, more than the first-time violation. So that's something to consider. If that's a path you want to go down, the suggestion is that we table action tonight so we can properly notify Shinwa that we are considering a departure, an upward departure of the penalty for them to be able to be here and discuss and contest that with us. So that's the summary that I got from the attorney, and I'll turn it over to the city attorney if I'm missing any part of that summary.
Mayor Rowan, councilmembers, he said it. Right.
And the key is the opportunity for due process.
Right. The key is that they need to have the opportunity to understand that you're considering this upward departure and the basis for it, and be able to respond to that.
Right, right. And I did have a question, too. Under our code language itself, a single owner can have two licenses, two different licenses. And I don't believe that we consider a second violation by the same owner with a different license as automatically requiring the presumptive second violation penalty, as I understand it. And I just wanted to clarify that.
That's correct. You license individual businesses. And so it's the business itself, that license itself, that is what your penalties are based on. But I think that your code anticipates that something like this might happen, that they would have other violations in other businesses, and that you would be able to take those into consideration when imposing a penalty.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Now, Councilmember Strong.
Not sure who this would question be directed at, but do we know if any other businesses in Roseville with liquor licenses share ownership?
Councilmember Strong, I did not do an in-depth dive in on all the different licenses, and we can certainly do that, but I'm not aware of any other ones. The only exception is, I'm just trying to think out loud if there's any restaurants perhaps that have multiple chains here in Roseville, that it might be under the same corporate ownership. So I don't want to say absolutely not. I would have to do some more further research, but none that popped to mind.
Okay. And are we just, is this corporate ownership or individual ownership? How is that determined? Maybe that's a you question.
Councilmember Strong, I reviewed the application materials for both licenses, and the owner is listed as an individual. It's the same person, the same address, the same email, all of the same information. So it appears to be the same individual.
Okay, thank you. And then I just also wondered if we needed to clarify, do we need to clarify any of this information? Is this provided to the applicant, the city code in completion of 302.15, where they would have notification, or they would know that there was the possibility of an upward deviation with this possibility?
That's the reason that I'm recommending you table this, so that the staff can make that notification, tell them- tell them the council will be considering this on this date. They may consider departing upward from the presumptive penalty and give them the upper and tell them, because we believe that you are under common ownership with this other business who had this other violation. And then they can come back before you and contest any of the details that might lead to that upward penalty.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, the notification of this action this evening does not include the sort of the potential for upward or explicitly state that there is the potential for that, is that?
It does not.
Okay.
It is just for the single violation. If there's no interest in going upward departure, you could proceed with business. But if you do want to explore that, then the recommendation is to table it so we can do the proper notification and then deal with it at a future meeting.
Right, and just an example in a past case. I believe we did have one or two instances over the years where we, the council, considered multiple violations in the action on a request for a renewal of a license. And we did the same thing. We tabled action on that request for a renewal so that we could provide the notice of the potential for a council action different than approving the renewal. So that's sort of the precedent, I guess, that we have in our organization as well in terms of that. All right, do you wanna check if there is a representative from Shinwa here this evening? Just to be sure. Doesn't appear to be the case, so all the more reason we need to, if we're going to consider an upward deviation, that we would wanna provide that do that notification. Councilmember Strong.
I just wanted to add that it just was a recollection and a simple Google search on my part that, you know, when this owner came forward, they mentioned that they were related. You know, I'm not keeping track of these items. And my goal isn't really to cause undue hardship, but I also wanna be fair to owners who have an entity that, you know, it doesn't seem fair if one owner gets multiple tries to get to that same place. So as we're looking, we're putting out the penalty for second offenses on these type of things, and somebody is able to have a first violation, even though they're they share a wall with the other entity, I just wanna make sure that we're taking into consideration the other owners who are doing it and who are actually having to pay that graduated, as Councilmember Groff mentioned, penalty for having a second violation. So while it's not my intention to compound on this situation, I do think that we should at least maybe have further discussion about it. I think it, and then if not this time, maybe rethink our ordinance on how we would address that in other businesses moving forward so that people would have that in mind. If they opened multiple small businesses in a short, you know, in a small area. Centro is an example. They have like three in Minneapolis. So if they were to have three different violations in Minneapolis, what would that mean? So I just think we, maybe it's a situation that's not fully considered in our application materials or what we've presented to this single owner in the past.
Right, so I guess the maybe the threshold question for the council on this one is, does the council want to consider the presumptive penalty as outlined in the code or deviate from that? If the council wishes to deviate, then it would be appropriate at that point to do a motion to table. What's the sense of the council in that regard?
I would sort of like to address this now, but also look at it as an educational component to this because it is new information to me. I'm just thinking, if you are a manager in one business, yes, you're connected with the overall, but they might be handled somewhat differently. They might be doing their training together, but they might not be. So I would like more discussion about it before we pass a higher penalty on these people right now. I would rather go with the standard.
I see, okay. Councilmember Bauer.
Welcome. Further discussion, just to understand more about have questions related to our application process, being able to, is that an individual that needs to be named or is it a separate entity? Also, a question of like, who actually, when we are handing out these penalties, where are they addressed to? Is it to the business entity or is it to the individual? I think that's important. I think building on what Councilmember Groff is stating, you know, the separation is important. The structures are, you know, multiple businesses. Do we structure differently very much together and very much separately? I think that needs to be factored. So to have that further discussion, I'll read the paperwork here.
Okay, so I wasn't sure that.
I would second the motion to table.
There wasn't a motion to table. I ruled that there was not a motion to table. I just wanna clarify, too, because my sense from Councilmember Groff was not necessarily to table, but to potentially take action this evening on what was before the council. So I just wanna make sure that I understood that either correctly or.
That is correct. I felt like we should address this, but also we should pursue this either in a council discussion later on or something like that.
Okay, so more discussion on a policy, but not on the specific case. And that's where I heard definitely more of, you know, maybe maybe policy discussion, but actually tabling the case to have that further discussion.
My motivation for that is to have the discussion that Councilmember Groff wants and maybe prior to then having bringing this in forward afterwards.
And certainly, and I'm glad that you clarified that at the end of your comments and again here, because certainly, I think, having that discussion with this particular case present, if that's part of understanding more about this particular owner's operations, we can't do that with them not here this evening. So certainly, I think that that would that would tend to lend itself to the tabling. I think that, you know, certainly, I don't know yet that I might look differently at how we have our code written because I think our code is written around the license holder and not necessarily, you know, if they happen to be multiple, an owner of multiple entities. But I do, if the council wishes to have more discussion about how this particular case works in terms of how this particular business and ownership functions, and if that might impact the decision on the case as to whether to escalate or not, certainly, the council has the option, if this is tabled, to not escalate. That is legitimately still one of the outcomes that could happen, even if we do table this. So I'm trying not to have the motion to table yet before us because we can't have any further discussion. I'm trying to suss out a couple of things. Councilmember Bauer.
Going back more a little bit, saying more in my comments, even if we have the discussion about, you know, adjustments to this policy, for that, we would have to have a council action for that to take effect to then change, you know, for some reason we wanna change this and to have that be involved with this current situation that's in front of us. I think that's a bit much to ask in just, you know, in one meeting. So for that reason, I am fine separating out these two, having the conversation about maybe adjusting this in the future or getting more any more clarification to the city code and then still having this. So I'm very much open to what we decide to do here today. My comments about tabling, I think, were just misstatement.
Oh, okay. All right. Councilmember Strong.
I would be open to furthering the discussion, not to necessarily presumptively accelerate the fines, but I would wanna make sure that, I think, that first question I had about knowing if other business licenses were shared across ownership, I wouldn't wanna create a situation where only one owner is penalized in this situation. You know, I think it would be, I don't think that's a good precedent to set, that only one organization, if we're doing it for one group, we're doing it for another. So I guess I would want that additional information in order to make a fair assessment of, and I don't know, you know, maybe we won't know that at this point, but I think furthering that conversation is important. And quite honestly, I would also appreciate Councilmember Schroder's voice in this particular, as we look at anything that may or may not change moving forward. I think it would be helpful to have the whole council and all of our perspectives because I think we each bring a different vision to that. And I think that's what makes our work more helpful for the community.
I do wanna be clear, too. We have a specific case before us of a violation. We have the presumptive penalty in code before us. Certainly, we can have the policy discussion at any time about how we might wanna adjust or change our code. I think I was hearing from Councilmember Strong that you would like to have some of the information about other license holders and potentially multiple owners having multiple licenses as part of your consideration of this case. I believe that's what I heard, that it wasn't, it wasn't just for the policy, general policy discussion. It was related to the discussion of this case or the consideration of a possible escalation of the penalty in this case.
I think in this situation, unless we had some clarity around how our application process is and that we are aware that the owner who share, who has multiple entities is aware that this acceleration of penalties across entities is a possibility, I think we'd probably have to have a ordinance change or tightening up with a date from which that is effective. I don't know. Council, Mr. Trudgeon.
Mr. Trudgeon.
So, you know, these are two separate issues. I just wanna be very clear. If you table the action to consider the upward penalty, we'll do the notice. They will have to come forward. You'll have to consider the facts of the particular matter. If we wanna look at changing the ordinance, and I'm not sure how much we are able to do that, but if we come back and do that, regardless of what you decide with an amendment to the ordinance, you can't apply that retroactively to the thing. So there really are two separate things. So we can certainly schedule a future discussion on this. But I think the other question in front of you tonight should be the one that you should be really focused on.
Right, so and that's the good, very good point. So as our code is written, the council always has the ability to deviate up or down from the presumptive penalty on the basis of findings that the council has. So I guess the question really before us this evening is, do we want to look to the possibility of deviating in this case? Or down, presumably up, I guess? Or are we prepared to take action on the penalty as it is? If we don't wish to consider deviating upward or downward in this case, then we have the action requested before us. We could still, as Mr. Trudgeon mentioned, have the policy discussion as a follow-up and relate it to our code going forward. But if we if we feel that we need to have a discussion as council about the potential of deviating in this case, and it's, once again, it's discretionary on the part of the council. We choose to deviate, and we choose why we wanna deviate. Obviously, we have to provide findings as to that, as to that reasoning. But, you know, that is, that is our discretion with any violation of our alcohol-serving and licensee code that we have. And then we, as I mentioned, there was, there was another case where we considered that in respect to renewal of a license. I believe our attorney.
I just wanna give you one point of clarity to maybe help with this discussion a little bit. Your ability to deviate doesn't always require you to table the item and reconsider at a second meeting. The reason that's required here is because the licensee couldn't have known that this dual license would be part of your consideration. But for example, if you read a police report and it's alarming and just on the face of the report, the information that they knew would be considered, you decided to deviate upward or downward, that's perfectly fine for you to do. The reason for this extra notice is because we'd be bringing in this extra information that they should have a right to address. I just wanted to give you that clarity.
Okay, thank you for that, Clark. I appreciate that. Councilmember Bauer.
I'd like to make a motion to administer the penalty as stated in the packet, which is for a first-time violation. I will second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Groff to approve the presumptive penalty in this case. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Bauer.
Well, I think the discussion here is good, and I think it's a discussion that we should have in the larger context. One of the nice things that we do here as a council, as we had with the prior code violation, is to not surprise businesses and residents. And my concern is with moving this upwards is, to me, that feels a little bit of a surprise, even though it is within our city code. I would much rather have that, have a discussion, maybe make that more clear. And so going forward, in situations like this, it'll be known to licensees, those that both are current licensees and those that are applying for a liquor license, to know that this situation exists. I believe there's also some edge cases with, you know, ownership outside of Roseville and other things that need to be for the business. But in this case, I don't believe that we should continue with how we've handled these things in the future. And I do look forward to that future conversation about what to do in situations with licensees that have multiple licenses.
Right, and as the second or Councilmember Groff?
Well, I wanna thank Councilmember Strong for bringing this up because I think it is a really important discussion for us to have that we hadn't really talked about in previous ones. So I'm glad we're doing that. I do think we should just go ahead with this one. But I do wanna, there's the educational part to this. We probably have to put something, obviously, notify everybody in the city who own liquor licenses so they understand what the situation is. And then in the future, we would need to address it ahead of time so that they would be notified and could come and speak to it. I'm looking forward to the future discussion.
Other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strong.
I think it comes down to what I've mentioned in the past. I don't feel right about moving that penalty up unless we have some certainty that there aren't other businesses that have been in the same situation that we haven't known, and so we have let them go by. And so, like I said, I would welcome the opportunity in the future outside of this to discuss that and kind of clarify that so that people know. But I think, you know, we do need to kind of look at making sure that it applies the same to each business and they know what the penalty, that the presumptive penalty, how it would be, could be changed again. I wouldn't want it just to be, 'cause I felt like it. It should be equitably applied.
Right, and I would just note that I think that the timing is such that we should be able to have something in place, I would think, before the next round of renewals and, you know, and license applications hopefully start kind of heating up at the end of the year. So I think the timing works out. I'm supportive of the motion to administer the presumptive penalty in this case. I think the council historically has not taken the notion of deviating upward on penalties lightly, even when there may appear to be pretty strong evidence. I think the council has been, and prior iterations of the council have been, you know, concerned about about that. And so I think that we've tried to use that responsibility responsibly. And I appreciate the conversation we've had this evening. With that, we have the motion before us to authorize the administration of the presumptive penalty for Shinwa for a first violation within 36 months. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that passes unanimously, and that penalty is authorized. That brings us then to our fourth case, which is for Game Center. And I turn it over again to Chief Adams.
Thank you. Our compliance checker went to Game Center to conduct a compliance check. While there, the checker ordered an alcoholic beverage. An employee then checked identification. However, they proceeded to serve the alcohol to our checker. The server was issued administrative citation, which has been paid. Management also provided the necessary training documentation. This is their first violation in 36 months. It's staff's recommendation for council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a one-day liquor license suspension.
All right, thank you, Chief. Are there questions for staff on this particular case?
I had a question.
Councilmember Groff.
So I was reading through, and it says that the drink was served, but then the server said they wanted to take the drink back once he realized the mistake. Is there any other information to add to that part of the conversation?
Thank you, Councilmember Groff. And so that does happen on occasion. It did happen in this case. I don't have additional information on that, but that is not uncommon for them to serve the alcohol and then maybe have second guess or second thoughts. The stance on this is that the alcohol has been served to the, to the minor in this case or in that, it's not like they held on to it, I guess, for like a better cause.
Thanks.
Is there a representative from Games Center here who wishes to speak to this this evening? Would you say that you introduce yourself and your role with the organization?
I am Tressia Northey. I am lead, her manager at Games Center. The CEO intended to be here, but thought the date was the 16th. So he left yesterday, so I will be representing. As far as I, even as a manager was aware, I just found out today that we were supposed to receive mail. No one told any of us in advance that there was mail saying there's gonna be a check, as far as I can recall. Everybody has their licenses up to date, and we've taken measures to prevent this in the future. We've put right next to the register, there's the date for, you know, 2004 plus the current day to make sure that people know exactly what day is available to be served on the licenses.
Right, are there questions for the representative from Games Center?
And with that, do you have the notice that the license is the other way when they're under 20?
Pictures of sample licenses?
Yes, we will.
I think it's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Here to tell you how to run a business. But it is kind of an obvious thing when you look at the license. But it is kind of an obvious thing when you look at the license one way compared to the other.
Yeah.
It should click, but I understand everyone's busy and.
Yeah, and we do get, we have, it's more of a game space than a serving space, really. So we have some, like, nationwide events that happen, so we get people from other states and stuff, and sometimes licenses just look different anyways.
Oh, I see.
So it's not necessarily some other places.
Not fail-proof.
Doesn't technically work for all of them, but.
All right. Other questions for the representative? Well, thank you for being here this evening, we appreciate that, and we wish we would have seen the, the higher up, but we understand how things happen. And you're, you're representing the organization admirably in that filling and pinch hitting role.
Yes.
With that, I'll just check, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? It's not appeared to be the case. We've got the request before us to issue the presumptive penalty for a first violation within 36 months to Game Center, which is the one-day suspension and the $2,000 fine. Is there a motion?
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember McGrath, seconded by Councilmember Strong. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, that, that penalty is authorized. And I just want to note that it's, it's, you know, something to note as an organization when you're dealing with a, a public that could be from all across the country, that, that probably puts extra pressure on the, the notion of the training and how effective it is. And, and, you know, once again, we don't want to tell you how to do your business, but we have had people come up here before and say, we're, we're rethinking our model because, you know, the serving of the alcohol and the risk associated with it just may not match up.
Yeah.
Once again, not telling you how to do anything, and we certainly wish you, you know, all success in whatever model you wish to pursue, and just want to make sure that our licensees are responsible for service to, you know, adults and not minors.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I believe we had the vote on that one, so it's been proved, approved. Thank you again. That brings us then to our next case, which is, now we switch to tobacco cases, and we have Noble Tobacco next, and I'll turn over it once again to Chief Adams.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple things to note for, for the tobacco. We also sent a letter to our tobacco license holders in relation to this. I'll be speaking about two today, however, I do want to note, due to a notification error, there will be a third that'll bring forward to council at a later date, but the two in front of you are the two that we're going to speak of today. And additionally, I believe for the first time, the city's taken advantage of a state grant, where we are going to do an additional round coming up here of tobacco compliance checks, however, that's for educational purposes only, so that will not be brought in front of council, but that's something that the state offers in a grant that we applied for and received. So we'll be doing an additional round. So this will be our first time doing a funded educational round of tobacco compliance checks, so I'm looking forward to that as well. As, as stated, Mayor, our compliance checker on the same date, which I believe was March 29th, went to all tobacco license holders as well. On that day, our checker went to Noble Tobacco to conduct a tobacco compliance check. While there, the checker ordered a pack of cigarettes. An employee then checked identification, however, they proceeded to serve the alcohol, the tobacco to our checker. The employee was issued administrative citation, which has been paid. This is Noble Tobacco's second violation in 36 months, with the prior occurring on August 11th, 2023. It's staff's recommendation for council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for tobacco license holders for a second violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a three-day license suspension.
Right, thank you, Chief. Are there questions for staff on this particular case, Councilmember Bauer?
Not related to say, but the grant noting, is that grant rule that also cover cannabis when we have those come, or is it only for tobacco?
Great question, Councilmember Bauer. This one individually is for tobacco only, so it follows, they, they reimburse the city for each tobacco license that we do the check on. So we told them upfront how many tobacco licenses we have, that's the reimbursement we get for. Definitely something that we'll keep an eye on for, for the cannabis too, should it come across, but not something that's included in this one.
Thank you.
Right, other questions? Do we have a representative of Noble Tobacco this evening who wishes to speak? Welcome, have a seat, and once again, just introduce yourself and your role with the organization.
Hey, everybody. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm honored to be here. My name is Mohammed Abu Fera. I'm the manager of Noble Tobacco, the son of the owner, and recently I became the manager. Before the, the first decade we got, I wasn't in charge. And then after I got in charge, I did get a guy who got trained, and I trained him to check the IDs. He did check the ID on that day, but I did teach him like how to check every ID, but he didn't see like, I, I didn't know I have to teach him like how to read the numbers, which is like pretty obvious. I showed him where to look for the date that flips every day, and he did solve her, and which is not pleasing. I am sorry about what happened, and I'm here on behalf of my family to reduce the penalty and not have the shop closed, and I'm sorry about what happened.
Thank you for being here and for your comments. Other questions for the representative of Noble Tobacco? All right. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right, doesn't appear to be the case. Council, we've got the request before us to issue the presumptive penalty. We also have the request from the license holder to reduce the, or to not have the suspension as part of the penalty. Council discussion and consideration.
You know, this is, we have to take these things seriously, and we can't treat people differently when they have violations.
I agree.
We make every effort to send out notifications and have people trained, so I think that for me, the suspension has to stay as recommended.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, be motion.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGrath, seconded by Councilmember Bauer to issue the presumptive penalty. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember McGrath is the maker, anything to add?
We don't want to see you back here again. Please keep your training up to date and make sure they know that, you know, because this costs money. I, I run a business, we all are involved with businesses and things.
Of course.
It's not a thing we take lightly.
Yeah, definitely. I agree with you.
Other discussion on the motion, as the second or Councilmember Bauer?
Yes, these are always difficult cases, because it's, you have an employee that made a mistake, and not necessarily reflective of what the owners are, but the owners are responsible, and it's nice to hear the additional steps and the work that you're doing. And with those, like, we don't expect to see you here again, and that'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Right, other discussion on the motion? And I would just add that it's, it's, it works to the benefit, I guess, of, of businesses who have licenses for these types of products, that it happens in Minnesota, that the age for tobacco and the age for alcohol are both the same, and so that notion of the, the license being different for the underage versus the, of age is very helpful, and the fact that it says under 21. Hopefully, as that gets instituted into the training and under your efforts at the management, that, as Councilmember McGrath said, we won't see you back here. But we do, I do agree that we do have to be equitable in terms of our application of penalties, and we understand, as Councilmember Bauer said, that there is an impact. Almost every license holder we have is a small business in one way or another, even sometimes franchisees of, of large chains are individuals who are trying to make, make a business go. So we, we do understand that, and we considered all of that in our decision as to what our penalties would be, but we had to weigh that against, you know, the, the cost to the community of underage individuals purchasing products that are inappropriate for those individuals. So with that, we do have the motion before us, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that penalty is authorized, and thank you again for being here this evening.
Thanks, Mohammed.
In our final case this evening is the tobacco compliance check for Holiday Gas, and once again, Chief Adams.
Our compliance checker went to Holiday Gas on Larpenter to conduct a compliance check. While there, the checker ordered cigarettes, an employee then checked identification, however, they proceeded to serve the tobacco to our checker. The employee was issued administrative citation, which has since been paid. This is Holiday's second violation in 36 months, with the prior occurring during our last compliance check on October 12th, 2024. It's staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for tobacco license holders for a second violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a three-day license suspension.
Right, thank you, Chief. Is there a representative from Holiday this evening with us, or with us this evening? Does not appear to be the case. Questions from the council for staff, Councilmember McGrath?
When we have checkers go out, they have a Minnesota ID correct, it's not from another state.
That is correct, Councilmember.
So that the chain of license would, would apply.
Absolutely.
They'd be able to see on our checker.
Yep, great question, yes.
After he said that they had other states and so on, I was just making sure we had that.
Other questions, Councilmember Bauer?
On that comment, this is a driver's license and not a Minnesota identification card, correct? That presented?
That is correct, though it could be, I, I suppose at times, they, they both denote the, the same orientation based on age, but this individual did have a driver's license, that is correct.
Was not aware of what the identification cards even look like. Thank you for clarifying that.
Right. Is there a motion, or is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Does not appear to be the case. Is there a motion on this presumptive penalty for Holiday?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Bauer. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strong is the maker.
I'm disappointed that this has happened so quickly in this location, which is pretty new, so I do hope that the management will take it seriously and look at how they can prevent having this happen again, since they really haven't been open a very long time, so. We, we don't want the next steps, which are even more dire in their situation, and granted they have other businesses, it's not simply a tobacco shop, but, you know, it impacts their entire business, I'm sure.
No doubt. Councilmember Bauer is the second or?
I have nothing to add.
Right, other discussion on the motion? I would just echo Councilmember Strong's comments, and, and also note a, a level of disappointment too, because I think this is a concern we have with our tobacco establishments and have had for a while, because they have those other lines of business within the same business. I, I think that the focus on the, on the, the ID checking and the education doesn't always seem to be there. It's a little different with the dedicated tobacco shop, sometimes because that's their business, they know that it's an age-restricted product, not that convenience stores or other license holders who have multiple lines of business don't know that, but it just seems to be, it's, it's a frustrating lack of focus on that notion of how important it is to check the IDs for, for those products. So just echo and add to those comments. With that, we've got the request before us to issue the presumptive penalty for a second violation within less than 36 months, in this case, for Holiday on Larpenter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, that presumptive penalty is authorized. Thank you, Chief, for being here for all these items.
Thank you.
We hate that we see this much of you this time here, and we hope that we don't see this much of you on, after the second check.
Have a good evening.
You too, thanks. All right, then that brings us to council direction on a councilmember-initiated item. We had, at our last meeting, Councilmember McGrath requested a discussion related to the city's streetlight policy be brought forward and put on a council agenda for the future, and that is back before the council for direction as to whether or how to proceed on that. We've received some information in the packet on the council's decision-making as to the original policy adoption, and so the question tonight is whether to put this on a future agenda and any direction to staff in that regard, because this was requested by Councilmember McGrath. I'll turn it over to Councilmember McGrath to promote this being on a future agenda.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and the reason I brought this forward is, we did implement this policy last year, March 4th, 2024, so it's been over a year now, and anytime we talk about policies, we always say, well, as we go down the road, hopefully if we learn things, we can bring it back for discussion. The only calls I've had on our streetlight policy that we put in place last year is, are ones that they don't want the streetlights installed. And I did go through the, the documentation here, of course, for safety reasons and things, there are reasons to have it, but there are parts, places where we're, we're putting them where the street is already very lit up. The ones I'm specifically speaking about are along Highway 36 and along Highway 3, 35W. So the, the residents there have been calling me and saying, why are we putting in extra streetlights here where it's already this, this lit up? I said, well, one of the policies we have is to put it at certain intersections, and that's why that had happened, had gone through, but they just felt like there should be some way of petitioning the council or requesting to the city that it not be installed, for a couple of reasons. One thing, it costs some money, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, but streetlights do, do cost money, and if they're not necessary and redundant, why are we doing that? So my, my thought is, we should visit this, revisit this, and have a discussion with our council members, of course about safety, but also about when it is not necessary, how would the residents respond, and what would be the policy. We have lots of discussion in this ordinance about if they request a light, but we don't have anything about if they don't want the light, so I would like a balance put into that, or at least a discussion by the council on that. So that was my reason for bringing it up.
Right. Is there any objection from the council to putting this on a future agenda for council discussion? Hearing no objection, that will be the direction then.
All right, and from what I understand, Councilmember McGrath, you're looking to bring it back, but also look at potentially an exception policy or some conversation around what could be considered, despite what the policy says, maybe there's some opportunities for people to petition, or if the council make a decision to not, in particular instances.
Exactly.
To, to waive the requirement for a light, let's say at a corner.
Or at least at that time, you know, I don't know if things change in the future. If Highway 36 goes away or something, and it's.
Goes dark.
Who knows? Who knows? And also, I noticed in our policy right now that it, it does have, commercial zones are handled differently, so I would like a little clarification for residents on that, so that when I'm speaking to them, I feel more confident too.
Right. Okay. And we should note too, that it probably makes sense, as you noted, Councilmember McGrath, that probably after a year of this being in effect and implementation, there's any feedback from staff as to other feedback that they may have heard that we haven't heard, that's worth noting one way or another, and so that can be part of that discussion. I would rather actually have that part of that discussion as opposed to this evening, since it's just whether we put it on a future agenda, and that's directed to the council as well. So it is, it has been directed, is there any other things that you would like to be part of that discussion, Councilmember Strong?
Where do they go? Where do they go? I just, I think maybe if someone, if a neighborhood wants, says we don't want it, but maybe the neighborhood turns over, what's the, what happens then if, if the neighborhood does want it, or vice versa, if there's a neighborhood that does have one, and now they're saying, well, we want it taken out? Like, I want to, I think it'd be, we need to clarify what starts or stops it. I also want to make sure that we're taking into consideration not just the homeowner, but people who, if it's a thoroughfare that people are walking, that we, I think a lot of the part, the reason that we brought this up to begin with was for safety, and so I want to make sure that we're bringing that up. And then as we talked about our lights, we talked about what type of lights, and if they were louvered versus down-facing and all this stuff, so maybe, maybe if there's some mechanism of what type of, you know, if they're low light and then they, you know, I think just some discussion about what types of lights, and then how people were to start and stop that would be helpful, because I think there's more to it than just, do we get to say no?
Yeah, I think some of that discussion may have been part of our discussion back in March of last year, so it'd be good to maybe revisit some of the things that came up at that time, but all part of that follow-up discussion, so thank you. All right, with that then, we move to consideration of city council minutes. We've got one set of minutes, which is the minutes from our May 5th council meeting as presented. Any discussion or change? No, this item was just to consider whether to put it on a future agenda, and so we'll have an opportunity for public comment when this comes back for discussion on that future agenda, and we'll make sure and get the notification out to folks. So I apologize if there was any misunderstanding about what the action was by the council this evening in this regard, but it really is just meant to be a council discussion as to whether to put it on a future agenda, which it is now done. So thank you for being here and your patience, and I'm sorry that there isn't a further opportunity for input at this time, but the, the policy applies to staff and the council as well. With that, then once again, we've got our city council minutes from May 5th for consideration. Council, any changes or corrections, or a motion to approve as presented? Council, any changes or corrections, or a motion to approve as presented?
Move to approve. Second.
Right, it's been moved by councilmember Groff, seconded by councilmember Bauer to approve the minutes from May 5th as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero, and those minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Trudgen, if you can give us a brief description of the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have a fairly short consent agenda for tonight. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $783,914.60. Agenda item 10D, I'm sorry, B approves the payment for a replacement heat pump at the Roseville Skating Center. Agenda item 10C approves entering into a professional services agreement with Brown Intertech for construction materials testing for the 2025 pavement management project in the amount of $24,927. Then finally, agenda item 10D approves a resolution to apply for the MINDOT Local Partnership Program grant to fund a portion of the Snelling Avenue pathway from Asbury Street to the northern border of Roseville, and that is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Is there a motion with respect to the consent agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Strong, seconded by councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. That then brings us to future agenda review. Mr. Trudgen, if you would give us an update on future agenda items coming up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, on next Monday is Memorial Day, so obviously no council meeting, our next meeting is June 2nd. At that meeting, we'll have a couple items that will probably take some time, but first will be the consideration of the ethics complaint that the Ethics Commission had a hearing on last week, the County Road B assessment hearing, and then receive the report from BKV regarding the civic campus master plan and report back on the work they've done to date. On the 16th, we'll consider the All-Dine Right-Away Vacation once again, have a joint meeting with the Finance Commission, start kind of some of discussion about the 2026 budget and look at the property tax base with the information we have. Any legislative changes? Obviously, the session's set to expire at midnight tonight, there'll probably be a special session, so we'll see to what impact that is and any city council budget goals that they may have, just be initial discussion. And then we'll also receive the Axel Group's Police Department allocation study. My understanding, that is now complete, so it'll be ready to, for presentation. We will try to get that to you earlier than the packet, just so you have an opportunity to read through it, I understand. I don't have it in my hands yet, but it's quite a lengthy report, so I want to make sure you have ample time. And thank you, councilmember Strong, for pointing out, we should have the Rosefest Parade on there, so there you are at June 23rd, 6:15 is when the parade starts. I'll provide you some additional information on when to get there, and we'll have a truck and everything, and all the other rules on that, but that'll be coming up at the end of June, and you can see the July meetings that we have scheduled.
All right. Thank you very much. Other questions on the future agenda from councilmembers? Or items that maybe we discussed?